I'll call the committee to order.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Convene as a board of county commissioners. Approval of the agenda?
Regarding personnel?
Personal matter.
Alright, is there anything else to add? Not a ticket motion. They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
A second, any more discussion? Here and now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, motion passed. Through the executive session, I'll take a motion for that. They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll say.
Got a second, any more discussion? Here and now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, motion passed. Okay, we'll have an executive session at 1:15. Number six discussion, Department heads regarding budget requests. Well, we'll just start right down the line. Commissioners. I guess probably, probably one of the first things that we should do, but it affects everybody. Just as well go through it, what are we gonna do about salaries this year? It may not kind of affect everybody, so we just will get that out of the way right away.
What is our insurance gonna do?
Do you have any idea?
The only estimate he gave me is to figure about 10%.
10%.
So is that what you guys all built into, yours was 10%?
I don't know what everybody built in. They just submit them to me.
In the past, it seemed like they give us a higher percent than it is.
Yeah, last few years was 20%. And then they never were.
It would be nice to know that number before we start this.
I agree, I totally agree. It's crazy that we gotta do a little estimate, why they can't, why they can't do it a little earlier or something, I don't know. Is it when we're our anniversary date, is that what it's all based on, or?
It's insurance companies.
Yeah, I know, but I meant, when we took it out from them, is that what it is?
That's November.
That's the problem, because that anniversary date, their budget anniversary dates are totally different dates, so until they get closer to the anniversary date of their insurance policy, they don't even know what that number is either. Because it's all based on claims.
Well, I guess we'll have to see if everybody got built in 10%, I guess that's what we'll go with, but. How else can we?
I'm wondering if we can afford to give a raise if we, if we're gonna do another 10% off health insurance. Quite frankly, I think we have one of the best health insurance plans in the state. And talking to a lot of other people not employed in this county or around the state, their health insurance doesn't come anywhere close to what we offer.
That's right.
And that's gotta be a pretty good benefit, though.
I guess I personally feel like the, the year that we've got going right now with the COVID and all that crap, everything has just kind of happened here so much with, uh, being people have had, not that they've had time off, but we've kind of tried to adjust schedules so they work one week off, one week crap, everything. I feel like we need to set the whole line a little bit this year on salary stuff.
So that was just, just my opinion, where I was looking back through that, and I think we're gonna be forever, I think we're gonna be way off unless I'm looking at it wrong. End of year, I don't know how a guy can, in my opinion. What do you think, Kevin?
I don't think we can give a pay raise this year. There are way too many people that have lost a lot of income from being forced to close because of COVID. Employees are not going back to work. I'd say no.
Davis, how would you look at it?
Yeah, I don't see how we can.
Cause I see it, unless I was figuring it wrong, but it seemed like, looked like some departments were at like 3%, some were at like 1.5%.
Yeah, I don't know what they built in. But those are the first requests that I just enter in what they requested on the computer and give you guys information. So, that's why we always schedule this, so you can find out what their question is.
I just pulled some up and when I was looking through it, that's what I got figured. Well, then I guess that's what the commissioner's feeling, that there will be no raises this year. So, I guess, uh, just go down the line there, commissioner's salary, we just want to leave the same, correct? I guess we'll just scroll right down each one, because I don't think I gotta go over.
Commissioner's insurance. Last year's budget was 7,000, now we're at 8,000. We're talking 10%?
No, this is, that's property insurance, health insurance is above.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have nothing figured into our health insurance, so I didn't further increase it.
I agree, no.
So we have to figure in 10% then?
Not necessarily, because it's gonna depend, we have different commissioners, we don't know what coverage they're gonna have, if any.
Okay, then just leave it the way it is, is that what you're saying?
Well, until we get a little further into this, I think.
So far this year, we've spent 42,000 in health insurance in the commissioners. And that till June 1 or July 1 or?
It hasn't been there yet.
It hasn't been there yet. So potentially, we could do a, that's a half a year. We could be at 84,000.
I'll put there whatever you have group, who doesn't. Um, that number might be a little off, because with Eva having to write the checks beforehand, then some of them have to be voided. So, it's quite possible that June's hasn't been voided yet.
Well, I think we got the same word we had last year.
Cause it, it's basically taking out bubble every month, but then I void half of it. So June's probably hasn't been voided yet. So, there's still June's left in there. It's really confusing how it has to be done.
Yeah, I think I've worked it out before, I asked it first.
Well, then I think let's just do that one for the way it's like being. I think we'll be less confused then. Now, the audit, I mean, is, I take it, we'll be supposed to get audited? We got that.
Well, we're supposed to get audited this year, remember they were a year behind? But there's still advertising for someone in the Aberdeen and Mole virtual occasions. So I don't know if we're gonna get audited or not, next year, or this year, for that matter.
Okay, publishing. We got 10,000, we've already used 44, so, I don't know, I don't think we can back that off a little bit. Even a thousand is...
You want it at nine?
What do you guys think?
You don't think we should keep the audit in for this year's budget, just, would we be better off to have it in our budget and not use it than have it not in our budget needed?
Well, it would save time to have it in there, because then you wouldn't have to do a supplement, if you do get audited.
And it doesn't hurt if we're $30,000 under budget, or?
Well, it's gonna make your cash applied increase.
Or can we take a lot of contingency?
If you end up needing to, yeah, I suppose you could do that.
Yeah, we technically have a contingency left this year either.
Well, then, put it in for 21?
I would say no.
I would think so.
All right.
Well, I guess I'm, I mean, if we're going to get audited, it'd be nice to have, have the number there, but like Kevin said, this contingency fund will give $125,000 in there, what, it's gonna have to use towards an audit?
Well, if you guys overspend your budget, then at the end of the year, we'll do contingency transfers to cover what you overspent.
Do you think we could need that much money in that contingency?
You never know.
Yeah.
So potentially, we could be at least $33,000 under budget in the commissioning budget if we go through audit this year.
Yeah.
I guess I, I think we should put it in.
It probably wouldn't hurt to put it in. I would split it in for right now, we've got some time.
They don't have anybody to hire to audit, they know what the number's gonna be, or they, it's gonna jump to 50,000.
Just depends on how long it takes them here.
That's a, that's a state employee that does that, right?
We've paid legislative audit that does it.
So we already know what it costs at 19. Travel, who's gonna know if they're gonna be, what kind of conventions there's gonna be?
They're still planning on having a founding convention this year, so.
I would say all that stuff, I guess. Alright, commissioners, find it. Elections?
Election, I just kept it minimum, because it's not election year. I can probably reduce my supplies.
From the 2,000 to what, 1,000, 500?
Yeah, we'll go 1,000.
1,000?
Yeah.
Travel, let's leave that there.
We have elections, so.
Alright, everybody good with that? Courts.
That's the clerk of courts. Budget request.
I'm not sure why they have 10,000 in for their services and fees.
So I was wondering too, I mean, it's wild.
Budget for 63 last year, we spent 3,700 in 19, or 3,200 this year.
I don't know, don't you think we should be able to knock that back to probably around 7,500? I would even give more than what it looked like it did, so it's gonna be 20. Unless there's some reason why they're thinking they're gonna need that much.
I'd say 7,000.
7,000, that's what the commission feels?
That's the number I had in mind.
Okay, 7,000. Yeah, supplies, I wonder what, I mean, that's, that basically.
Drop that a half, too, couldn't we?
750?
I would think you should be able to drop the, the, uh, law library, because Jamie went with that other company.
What's that?
The law library on here, the bottom number, the 298. That was the law library, and Jamie switched companies, and it's not as expensive as it used to be.
Do you got any idea what?
Well, we've spent over 4,000 so far this year. We have to talk to Jamie, see if there's any hidden costs along the way, but I would think you could drop it to half.
Why don't we drop it to 10, and then Jamie can tell us a different later?
Okay.
10?
Is that this one, court branch to other entity?
Yeah, that's the law library.
That's okay.
Drop that to 4,000 so far this year.
Drop it to 10?
Yeah.
Then we'll go to auditors.
I'll just change all of my wages back to last year's. Other than that, I increased by $200. 100 in publishing, 100 in rentals.
Is everybody alright with the auditors? Yeah. Jim, Davis?
Yeah.
So your health insurance there, you did the 10% down here, health insurance? Is that what they've seen?
I believe so, on mine, yeah.
Yeah, 40,000.
Okay, treasures?
Um, so, the only thing that's really increasing on the salary side of it, everything I get put back down on where it was, is the health insurance side of it, um, because I'm coming over with my group insurance, so it's gonna cause that to go up. Um, because there's never been some group insurance in that office, I believe. Um, so that's why that number's higher, um, and that is with a 10% increase on it. Uh, the bottom half, uh, there are numbers that I believe Violet had put in there before I did. Um, and there's an increase in the services and fees, um, is the only increase, and that's by $400. Not exactly sure. At this point, why I can ask her, but.
I guess you can ask her that, will you meet again, any else, so are we okay with the treasures? Okay, thank you. Was Jamie coming up here, probably, when he got court?
I bet he was in court, yeah.
Looked like quite a trail.
So do you want what's in his budget group this year, put back for salary?
Yes. I wonder why he's, why he's got the services and fees so, so high. I guess in 18, he was 17, but this year, he's only used a little over 3,000. I don't know, it seems like we should be able to knock the services and fees down, wouldn't you think?
No, in 19, he spent 12,000, 18, 17,000.
Yeah.
I don't know what all, why, why would it be so much less so far this year?
Well, just looking at that, I know he's not here, but the drug testing, that comes out of his office?
Yeah, he uses it as evidence in court.
Okay. What do you guys think about the services and fees, leave it the way it is, he just left in what he had in the budget for last year, but.
I would, I would say let's leave it and.
Then we can talk to him.
Ask you.
Some of his supplies, I mean, he's never, hell, he's never, well, 17. I would think we should be able to lower the supplies, I mean, if it's, they're coming close.
6,000.
What did I say? 6,000, you guys?
That's the number I had in mind, 6,000.
I don't know, I didn't, even been up here, going up there to the special prosecutor. Obviously, you spent 1,800 this year. So that must be what he uses.
I guess that's why you.
That's a good guessing. Probably should just leave that one alone.
Rentals can be dropped, too.
Yeah, about $200 on rentals, it looks like should cover everything, yeah.
Like Jim says, this half looks like it would be fine there, rentals, I don't know what he's gonna do with your rent. Yeah, go to 250?
Well, so it is.
I would think we could drop that about a half, too.
Down 500.
Yeah.
Well, at 753, I think that it would be 15, 16, I think you'd be safe with saying 16, drop it to 1,600. If you're just going off of his figure. 1,600?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at previous years here, 1144, 188, 199, or 1,009.
And I'm just going to do it his from this year, 20. Sure all okay with that, 1,600? Did you get that back? Did you get that?
1,600?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Guess health insurance, we'll back up there in health insurance.
Okay.
He's got more than 10% fixed on there.
I can look through if maybe you're in 10%, if that's what you guys want me to do for everybody's.
I think everybody should be figuring 10%. I think that's what we all agree with, didn't we?
Okay, I'll do that.
Just do that until it's.
I'll bring them up, yeah.
Okay. 10%.
Quarter appointed attorney.
I would still like to look into trying to advertise for public defender.
But I think that's, the first step is, we gotta get that okay with Judge Meyer, don't we? Is how I took it, that's how we gotta do it?
We still have to have it in the budget, but still you, this line item, we, we.
Yeah.
No. It's a different, it's a different department, but you could always switch it.
Paul, that's one that.
I'm pretty sure, Kevin, I think that's what we gotta do, isn't it, to, for everybody else, that's what I was told when we had to go up.
I was tired, and then, I would like to sit down and do it with somebody that didn't know about that. Good luck with that. Because you hear all kinds of things, but.
Guys should be able to find another county that's doing it, if that's what you mean, or something like that.
Other than maybe Sioux Falls, because they're, I know they're trying to be completely different dollars.
I had sent out an email to all the auditors, wondering who all these public defenders, I can go back and look and see who replied.
We got time, so we can, we can look into that.
I can't believe that we only spent 6, 66,000 so far this year, you convert every meeting, it's 10,000 this meeting, 10,000 that meeting.
I would've guessed it's more than that right now, but apparently it's not.
Well, just July, stuff doesn't end there.
We'll let Becky check, let her give us that answer.
Even if we could hire a public defender for 8,000 or 85,000. I don't even know what this is.
But if you're figuring that as a salary, 85,000, then you got your insurance and all that, then that'd be.
Yeah, but last year, we spent 195,000.
Then you also have quarter appointed attorneys, and every family member's gonna have a different, well, that's what I'd like to visit, with somebody that didn't know about that. Claim every family member's gonna have their own attorney, on every.
Well, that's in the child defense cases.
That's usually not on.
That's the next page.
I wouldn't, I would just like to do it with somebody that didn't know that, would know the answer, not, we think this, and we think that'll happen, and.
It would seem like it would be a lot, a lot cheaper out if that would be the case, if we got to do that, and not, you know, that insurance. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it would be a full-time job for us.
I, I know that, uh, McPherson, I know they do something like that, because I know that, that kid is up there. I don't think they got a full-time state attorney, they got a part-time state attorney, and then he fills in. That's how I took it.
Isn't that what, uh, Carson? Carson and Dewey or Zimbach, are they all together as one?
Sounds like it.
So she was, that's what she was talking about when we were out there for a meeting, and then, about doing a public defender.
Well, we got a little bit of time, but we.
Nice to, nice to get, like you said, nice to have the answer, to figure out what that would really be.
Who are you gonna get ahold of on that?
What's that?
Who are you gonna get ahold of?
I would guess, first, I would probably go talk to the judge.
I think it has something to do with Judge Meyer.
Somebody told me that, I said, somebody said, you gotta get it okay with the judge first, that it's up to him to who he's gonna appoint. And if you hire somebody that he doesn't like, or, or whatever excuse, he might not ever appoint that guy, and you got him on payroll. So.
I very much believe Jim is right on that. I was told that from somewhere, I don't remember exactly what.
You know, I don't know if it's.
Think we gotta do a little bit more investigating.
Yeah.
I think.
You gotta go talk to him then, or?
I can.
If you can give a guy the information, that you talked to some of the auditors.
Or, or, maybe sometime, if he had time, talk to him, visit with us. Or, or maybe sometime, if he had time, stop in and visit with us. Oh.
Being good if you can do that, that'd be great. That might be like home to you still.
I bet it isn't on Monday afternoon.
All right, you check ahead of that, Jim.
Okay.
Abuse child defense. Well, it looks like we just want to leave it right where it's at. Looks like it could be a little short, maybe. You all agree with that?
Yeah.
Courthouse.
The insurance I just put, I raised based on what we paid this year. Services and fees, I just stayed the same. You guys can do what you want with that. I just left everything the same. I don't know what you guys wanted in there.
Just leave around, see if he knows anything that we should try and do.
No, but we've been discussing that being.
Like repairs, oh, let's just start right up there, the insurance, that's, that's fine, but the services and fees. We want to do something with that, since it looks like, we're only at fourteen hundred for this year.
But that depends a little, that you guys have done next year.
Okay, then let's go around and repair the maintenance. I know we've been talking about lights. There's no question about that. It's gonna take, but we got, we got some in that other fund for, for that too, don't we?
Yeah, there's quite a, there's, I haven't seen it this morning. Just quite a bit of that other fund.
Grab it. And services and fees, looks like we should be.
Nine hundred and eighty-two thousand.
I know that ain't all just for here.
What, what's that fund?
Nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents, that's that building renovations fund.
Oh. Yeah, that's for courthouse and jail too, isn't it?
Yep.
Couldn't, if we're not gonna use this fifty thousand this year, couldn't we use some of that and start replacing? We don't have to do the whole courthouse at one time, do we?
Yeah, I, I really honestly believe we need to do something with these lights in here. Well, it's just a matter of time, we gotta do some, I have Jamie's office, I mean, he's got a lot of problems on his, and that office, that I do, yes, Becky?
Um, I believe there's a central air unit that needs to be replaced upstairs, and also the one in the auditor's office needs to be replaced. And that, if possible, could come out of this year.
Probably a fifty thousand.
I really think we should be checking in and getting some estimates on, for redoing some of the lighting system, and, and like that stuff in here, in the courthouse.
Yeah, but we don't need to do it all in one year, every four, maybe.
Okay.
I guess I would leave that the same and see, we can even possibly.
Well, so we can get some of that done this year, yet. But we can look at that again in our next, we can, we can change that then too.
He did receive a quote from Hayes on the unit upstairs, there's a north and south unit, and for replacing both, it would be six thousand sixty dollars.
Both units?
But then it says exclusions, exercise tax, electrical wiring by others, crane port installed by others, what all these stuff are cost.
Eight hundred by ten hundred, then.
Probably.
If those things are, if those things are needed to be replaced, to me, that should be done, and put it on this year's, take it off the fifty thousand this year.
Absolutely.
But we should do another quote from somebody else too.
Well, and there's a note on here that says the north one is still good working right now, but the south is not. But I think they're both old. So do we go and replace the, the south one, and then next year the north one?
Well, I know that when we were up there working upstairs, they were always checking on that. I mean, holy smokes, all that insulation's gone off of them lines, I mean, it's there for a reason, but I don't know, other guys named guy, I mean, them, them lines go up and down this building, go to smokes. And I mean, that insulation's just gone off them.
And so.
True.
P tech, units up there?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you go upstairs and look at them lines up there, I know Hayes said something when we were up there, about how exposed all them lines are, I mean, that insulation's on there for a reason.
Yeah.
And that's all gone off of them up there.
So who is it that determines we're gonna replace that? Dave?
Dave looks for direction from you guys.
I'm on, I'm on the buildings.
So maybe you should visit with Dave and meet with him, and go through the courthouse and see what should come out of this year's budget?
I'll get together with Dave.
Me and that stuff there, we got it last year's budget, let's get it out of there, use it.
Yeah.
Or, you know, get, get some of that stuff replaced there.
I'll get, I'll get together with Dave, and try to get some other quotes for, so we can figure out what we can get all done this year. Okay?
So we're gonna just leave that fifty there?
I think we'll squeeze that for now.
Well, a lot of days bring those P tech, P tech, very traditionally, very much.
Zuber?
Yeah. That's what I would.
Be a good place to check with.
Zuber. Plus they can fix it themselves.
Courthouse supplies, I'll leave that at that point, but.
And maybe you drop that to ten or twelve.
I think it should be like, like we did on some of this whole half. Twelve, is that what you guys want?
Yeah.
Is that good then? Okay.
D O E.
That salary.
Okay.
That salary occurs in the, the part-time, split over.
That salary's for the whole department.
Becky's just gonna change all of them, so we don't have to sit there and talk about them.
We're not ready for you yet. I told Justin when we were down, Becky. I'm half of it, I'll just stay here.
Services and fees, I wonder, uh, I think Deb said she could call her, we got, we got a question about that.
What's her Vanguard stuff, I see?
Do that, I don't know if you do that, once a year bill that Vanguard deal, or twice?
I don't know that. I can go run her services and fees and see what it's been doing the last couple of years with Vanguard, if you guys want me to.
I mean, I just wondered too, just like supplies, I mean, was there something coming up, if it, didn't she just get computers replaced?
I believe so.
I thought so, so I'm just trying to figure out why we're, why she put ten, ten back in there again. We'll just call her real quick, see if we can get her or not. Yeah. I'll call Jim. Well, it's a two of seventeen, where it was at eleven thousand. Eighteen ninety.
Hello?
Hello, Deb?
Hi.
This is Jim, we're, we're in our meeting, discussing budget.
Okay.
Uh, we had a question on service and fees.
Okay.
You spent thirteen, thirteen, or seventeen thousand, and you got thirty-nine figured in for next year?
I still, I have, they haven't sent me a bill yet for Vanguard. So, that, that's, it's gonna, that's gonna be around, I think at nine or ten, no, it's maybe more than that. So there's, I have to, I pay Vanguard, I pay Beacon, Beacon's got another two years on their contract, which is fifteen. Um, what did I, what, did I have a saved amount in there last year?
You had thirty-four thousand last year, and for twenty-one, you put thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-nine, and we're getting new, um, a new software update from Van, or Ultra, and I don't know what that is yet.
Will that be, will that be in twenty-one, or in twenty?
Well, they're, they would like to start getting it in, um, I think, I'm not sure what they're waiting on right now, if they're waiting on us getting a new server, or what.
Oh, I see.
So, 'cause I talked to Bob, I can't remember, last week one day, and there, it's a whole new update, and a lot of it's for new soil survey stuff.
Oh, uh, okay. And, and we kinda.
I might be able, I might be able to live if we leave it at thirty-four.
Okay.
Leave it, put it to thirty-four then, Deb?
I, I think that should cover me, yeah.
Because some of it's gonna get paid for this year, guys, isn't it?
Excuse me?
Is it some of that gonna get paid for this year?
It's annual.
Is some of that gonna get paid for this year?
Oh, yeah.
It's an annual thing though, right, Deb?
Yeah, it is. Ultra, Vanguard, Beacon are all annuals, so they're pretty good sized payments.
Okay.
Let's put the thirty-four then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put thirty-four for now, and, and if, when you get back, if you start adding things up, we can always revisit it.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
What's our other questions on, about supplies?
Supplies. You got ten thousand in there, and you gave thirty-seven hundred.
Yeah, and I, here's what I usually do, I'll leave till close to the end of the year, and then, that's when I order bulk paper, bulk everything. So I will spend, and I'm just about out of paper now, so I will spend a good deal of that on towards October, November.
Okay.
Did I leave that the same?
Yes, yeah, weekend for now, yeah, and.
I mean, did I leave it the same as last?
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I should be.
In nineteen, you spent seven thousand, seventy-three hundred.
Yeah, I didn't order, I didn't have to order very much paper in twenty, or in nineteen, I mean, I'm sorry. I didn't have to order very much paper, but now I'm, I think I'm down to, again, I don't know what we're, I don't know how you guys are gonna how Becky's gonna do this for that new server, is that gonna come out of all of ours?
It's coming out of the courthouse.
Oh, so that's not coming out at all?
Nope.
How about do, how, about the copy machine? Is that gonna need something major? Cause that gets split between all of us.
No, it's gonna be no different than it has been.
Okay, so, I have, I spent two hundred, is that right?
Two hundred and twenty-seven, yeah.
And I have it at two thousand?
You got, you got twenty-one budget of forty-one hundred.
Uh, forty-one, and I spent two hundred?
Yeah.
What the heck did we spend it on?
In nineteen, you spent four thousand, and in twenty, you had twenty-one hundred dollars budgeted. And you spent two hundred.
What the heck did I help fix in nineteen? I gotta make it up. Well, no, go ahead, um, spent two hundred so far.
Drop that back to like twenty-five for now?
Yeah. I, I was thinking two, but, two, yeah, two, two to twenty-five.
Well, leave it the same as in twenty, twenty-one hundred.
Sure, that will be fine too.
Okay. Yeah.
Do you want me to stay on the phone till you're done with that one?
Well, I think we are done, aren't we?
I think we are.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Okay, register deep.
Okay, um, I had figured an increase at the top, obviously that will have to be changed. I didn't raise anything, trying to keep everything the same, and requesting to keep my halftime definitely.
I guess I'll go there too, just like we talked to Deb on repairs and maintenance. I mean, it looks like you're probably gonna spend nine hundred thousand dollars, you got it at twenty-five, the same as you did in twenty, you wanna, can we lower that?
Let's see, so far I've spent four sixty-eight this year.
Four eighty-one.
Repairs and maintenance, mine says.
Right. Mine says four eighty-one.
Those ones are updated? Oh, gotcha, there's one up there. Okay. What do you think, lower it to two thousand, or?
Well, yeah, like I said, I would think to easily lower to two thousand.
Yeah, we could probably lower that.
Well, you need that much in service and fees? Fifteen hundred, you haven't spent anything this year. Last year, six twenty-seven.
And eighteen's the biggest year you have, is nine hundred.
Take it down to what?
Eight hundred?
Yes, probably easily do that.
Yeah, eight hundred? Is everything else look good there, the guys?
I think so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Um, would you guys please go to page seventy-two?
What's that?
Go to page seventy-two.
Okay.
This is also Casey's budget, um, but we keep budgeting every year, and we're not spending, so I don't, I'm not sure.
We're not spending anything, then why are we budgeting it? Supplies, that was in seventeen, nineteen hundred.
I believe this is considered the modernization and preservation fund.
Yes.
Um, and only specific things can be purchased with it, I believe? I don't know.
Uh, just about anything except for salaries, and, like, I can use it for, uh, training, supplies. But I haven't used it, so.
Well, then why don't we just take that out of there? That's six thousand dollars. If we haven't used it in two years, why would we be using it now? Go ahead.
But these, but these are restricted to certain things. So wouldn't it be better to lower her regular budget, and leave the MMP alone, and leave this money here, so she can actually use this money, instead of it growing and growing and never using it? Kind of like secondary roads? You guys follow me on that?
Okay, but I mean, let's just say that repairs and maintenance, you got a thousand in there, we lower her repair and maintenance down to two thousand, so then, then we take, take it down to nothing?
Well, technically, we're gonna be able to take her regular budget down to a thousand, and then use this thousand here?
But, but she's allowed to use it on whatever she's got for repairs and maintenance, isn't it?
I can use it on just about any type of equipment, training, I believe I can on travel, I'm not for sure on that one, but I, I mean, it can't be used for salary, obviously, but just about anything I can use it for.
So, like for supplies, she has-
Supplies I can use it for.
Why didn't she put the regular one at five hundred, and two thousand out of here? That way we're using some funds that are restricted only for certain things.
So the regular supplies, five hundred?
Put five hundred on that one.
And then the MMP?
Two thousand? Or two thousand? So the five thousand? Right.
I don't see a problem with that.
Then the repair and maintenance, then go- We drop that one down another.
So we drop? Drop it down to a thousand?
Or do we drop it to a thousand?
Drop that one to a thousand?
Drop the first page down to a thousand, instead of the two thousand we talked about.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
And just leave the-
Leave the thousand per term.
Do you have any computer purchases or anything?
Not putting up. So the MMP was one thousand or two thousand?
One thousand.
One thousand.
For repairs and maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
Two thousand for supplies?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, there was a little bit. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna, I wanna jump back out on yours, but go back onto Deb's. Why, why does Deb have so much travel to this one? Does she go that many more places than, like Casey does?
Well, her and Greg go, and they're out for a week. For accessory school and-
All right. You got, you got service office?
Uh, everything's the same, except utilities, I increased to six hundred based on what's been fed so far this year.
I'd say it looks good, don't you?
Yeah.
Press turn on that one.
That's up and stayed.
Got here?
No, I got this, um, we'll change the insurance enough. We just, um, we'll go back to anywhere other than ten percent for insurance, only other thing, he said he put in was a car, off the bottom, um, sixty-four thousand. That last, uh, that Taurus, uh, probably was it?
How many cars you got now? You got five vehicles now, don't you?
Uh-
Six?
Five, I haven't, the one hasn't sold with, uh, the sale in the first one, had a surplus on it, and other Taurus.
That was wrecked?
No, no, it's, the one that had a hundred and sixty thousand miles. It's all, it's been stripped, it's just sitting on the four H building.
Right.
I'm working on putting it online to get it sold. It's been surplus rated. So, now it's coming up to sell. Other than that, I don't think this is increasing, I mean, it has, other than what I've talked about, I guess. Unless you guys see anything else in that.
Well, if you go by, by the resolution, you have one sheriff, two deputies, two part-time deputies, and a secretary. That wage would come out of two hundred and seven thousand, one oh seven eighty.
What was that figure?
Two oh seven, one oh seven eighty.
Pretty much we cut two hundred and eighty last year. But you're getting paid something out of the Sheriff's Department right now, uh, five hundred and some hours, about five, one, five hundred and twenty hours, I believe? Who's in there?
Have you submitted hours for that yet? This year?
Okay, I have some, I don't know. Uh, what is that?
I'm pretty sure it's all come out of jail so far this year.
Yes, it is. It is.
Okay, you should do that figure then, so we have a better idea.
And I would say you can do the two oh seven, one oh seven.
Well, then it, you know, almost looks like that, uh, at the rate it's going, and Josh is gonna be over on salary if yours isn't even figured in yet. And he's gonna be over budget if yours isn't even figured in yet, if you don't think, you don't think yours is figured in yet?
I mean, it's all come out of my side, jail side.
But you said you had five hundred and some hours.
There's five, you know, five hundred and twenty hours designated for that side. That can be split out, should be paid on his side.
On the sheriff's?
I haven't used, no, I don't have.
Oh.
Technically, I don't think I've used somebody.
So is the only reason that you're doing that is to get a vehicle? To drive back and forth, work every day, or?
I don't know what is, I guess. It's for when he uses me. I've, uh, responded to a couple on a thin vest last week in Mulberry.
Well, I'll have to talk to Josh then on that. Now, is that what he's planning on, another new vehicle, or?
Yeah, that's what he has in there. That one, and then the Crown Vic, and the, and that one, the other Taurus would be gone.
And then just leave it for that, and everybody just talk to Josh for asking, what do you want to do, what you guys wanna do with it?
I would say leave it for now, we'll discuss at the beginning.
If you want him down here, I can text him and say he comes out.
You gotta talk to Kevin? You gotta do a tongue time, but, uh, it's going on in court, is that where he's at?
Yeah, he's in court, but he can have somebody else take over quick while he comes on, talk to you guys, up to you.
They can talk to him later.
Okay. Okay, the other one then, the jail one, I already set it all back for all of us for this year, same thing, we figured in a certain percentage for, uh, salaries and, uh, capital percentage for insurance, we'll put them back to where they were. Yes.
You're looking at the amount expended current, that's only through the end of June.
Just figure it out, look at it.
We're looking more at-
You're talking salary?
Yep. I'm just worried it's gonna be an issue.
It's gonna be over.
Pay over.
I mean, it looks like you're almost gonna be, just by guessing, it's gonna be probably close to a hundred fifty over.
And contingency doesn't have that.
I guess I'm gonna ask a question, though, don't, it's not gonna have to be, this is my opinion, that maybe you're gonna have to start taking a shift out of there, working a shift, and somehow we gotta, I mean, if we're, if we're that far over on budget, come-
A lot of it's overtime issues.
A lot of it's overtime. The two positions we cut last year, there's a bunch of overtime, I'm losing, um, two guys, uh, for two weeks, starting the middle of this week, for their guards stuff, so there's a bunch of overtime in there, coming up in the two weeks, well, left in July, they're gone the fifteenth through the first of August, for their normal, nearly eighty stuff, so. There's gonna be some coming up in there too. My part-time people, I only have one part-time person right now. I'll have an array of part-timers to utilize right now. I have one opening currently, it's short one person, right now, and I believe there's one, uh, coming back from his guard stuff, that's gonna be putting in, I don't just believe as well. Right, so.
Just one quick comment on this, uh, it was something that we'd have our jail advisory board meeting before this first meeting, but we didn't, so we're still waiting to hear what the other counties have gotten in the table.
Yeah, which I have not heard from any of them, I did hear from Dewey County today, an email. Um, wanted to know what was all needed for that meeting coming up on Friday, I just told them, you guys wanna yes or no, answer basically, um, and you'll go from there, so, that's why I emailed them back today, but he did say they were very interested, so I guess we'll see what he says on Friday, so you guys know. Um, but, the rest of it, it's, I decreased the, um, maintenance one. Repairs and maintenance from ninety down to forty.
But, like, with jail supplies, I mean, what are you, what are you all getting there, cause I mean, holy smokes, I mean, if we're at half, not even half, we're almost, we're within four thousand. What all comes out of there if it's, if it's almost over the budget already?
Well, jail supplies is gonna be any, you know, clean, all the stuff.
Oh, the cleaning, uh?
Yeah, everything. Toilet paper, cause all that got lumped into one, the paper products and all that stuff, got, there are several light items, I got two slumped in one last year, right?
Yep, except brochures?
Yes, except brochures.
No, that's what I was asking, is, did you order a bunch already, I mean, cause, like, in nineteen, you were only at thirty-two thousand six, you know?
Yeah.
I'm saying that you got a lot of it on hand right now, you're not gonna be ordering that much or something, because-
Clean supplies, there's, most of that's gonna be on hand, I shouldn't be having to order hardly anything there. Toilet paper is gonna be as it goes here, some of it, I had, it cost more because I couldn't find any for a while for COVID. It took, getting it from all other places, but, hopefully, uh, stock appears again, I have to grill in the room where I used to get it, it'll be like, have a normal price.
We got that number, keep slowing, we're gonna blow that budget out by long ways.
Well, that's what I was asking, is, if he's got a lot on hand, then he ain't gonna be ordering that much.
There don't be a lot, a lot of supplies for the rest of the year, that one should, should take it off.
Hey, that's dead, girl, way over halfway, I'm down there, every line I have that you got.
Pretty close, yes, we are, right half a year, so let's, we're running, right, right next to it.
Every one of them.
That jail insurance on there, is that like, um, once a year payment, that's why it's getting paid?
Yep.
I say that, that doubles, we're in trouble.
Let's save it at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
So the only kind of medications, getting budgeted in for this year, does that come out of supplies then, or?
Yep, so that would be the, first, our personal care, the OTC meds, commissary cleaning products, I don't use any of those lines anymore, paper products.
Commissary, usually, uh, common, uh, version four.
And then on the next page, paper products.
So, back into the salary side of things, how many, how many employees do you have right now?
Twelve. So you lost right back to-
So when did we go down to twelve employees?
January. Cause we had talked about that in the budget stuff last year, so in January, um, it went to twelve.
Trying to figure out how we can possibly be well over half spent of what our budget was already in twenty twenty, when last year we expended six hundred and thirteen thousand, and we dropped employee, number of employees. We're gonna, based on the current pace we're on right now, we're gonna have six hundred, basically six hundred and sixty thousand dollars left.
There's been a lot more overtime, sure, there's been a lot of dumb thing, sick people, gone for guards. I said this, next two weeks, we're gonna, we're perp two, some cards, I'm losing two, I was gonna lose three, but the other one doesn't have to go.
It's just the overtime that's doing it, but?
You've been adding up how much overtime has been, uh, paid out so far this year?
Yeah.
How many hours?
Your time is gone, and then I'll have, like, suddenly I have one part-time person. And his book, I mean, he was a former employee here, and he went to the PD in Mulberry, and he can lay out, well, in his schedule, it's a lot of them as well. And I've offered the other, you know, one part-time work, so. And I've offered the other, you know, one part-time work, so. Todd came in and worked a graveyard myself, because someone didn't show up for it, so. I'll cover on the ones I can.
I'll take her walk to the hotel, huh?
Yeah, you can move on, go back.
Yeah, yeah, let's move on.
She's going to the mall, she starts at Adam.
What's that?
She started all the traffic, she just starts at Adam.
Yeah. Let's go to the corner.
He didn't change anything.
Good. Emergency and disaster.
I'm gonna talk about it still, or?
What's that?
You want me to talk about it still? What I did?
I don't know what's gonna hurt.
This isn't actually that yet, this is the old emergency and disaster.
Okay, cause I have the two-two-six, and you have the one-on-one?
They're, they're looking at the one-on-one, so you see a mark request in a zero.
Okay.
Support the four.
What's the difference between this one and the other?
Because according to legislative audit, by law, we have to have it set up as a separate fund because of the grant reimbursements we receive from the state.
And for our contract with the state that we signed, it's, it's right on there, that all funding reimbursement that comes back in the account has to go through the two-two-six one, so they can track it clearly.
So, we can make our math.
Yes.
I don't deal with all that, so maybe you don't really look at that one.
Yeah.
Support the four.
I would assume Jamie put his numbers based on the pending cases they have right now? Those cases, some of them to two to three years.
Something where I like the medical care, why wouldn't there be nothing taken out yet already? You said one time a year or something, or?
No, it's after they finish a court case with Aberdeen, an agreement.
I just assumed that has been there, is nothing out yet?
There's plenty out in prisoner medical care, about four.
Just leave it the same?
Yeah.
Economic assistance? Must be mandatory in it?
Um.
Or just what we do.
That one is, girl South Dakota, I believe.
County nurse.
If county nurse would like a three percent increase if possible?
I don't think that's possible, do you think it's possible? I guess we're saying no, aren't we?
How, how do we do that one? How's doing it, everyone?
I don't know how that's possible.
I was just, had asked Renee if we planned on asking for an increase this, for next year, and she said three percent would be great, but I know that goes, so that's, I I mentioned it.
Okay.
Scott, you?
Hold on, say it.
One thousand nine hundred eighteen point seventy-five.
Hours.
That's including that ones that have been terminated, they're no longer here, is that twenty?
Just that, however many hours for overtime.
Was that one thousand, what?
One thousand nine hundred eighteen point seventy-five.
Basically, what you're saying is there's gonna be that much again.
Probably not that much, but we'll see how all the employees go. I'm pretty positive, there's another one, first part of August, and there's a couple of them looking for different jobs. Just nothing concrete yet.
So, they get time and a half over tips?
Yes.
So, probably, what, twenty-five?
Twenty-five dollars an hour, probably.
Sixteen, eighteen.
Forty-eight thousand dollars right there.
I would say, let's wait and see what the other counties come up with, and whether they're gonna take a look at the new facility, or look at changing manpower or travel.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the new facility, are they gonna, like, provide employees too?
Nope.
Not enough to play that.
I know. That will be discussed later.
We'll talk about it. Ambulance.
Thirty-one five, I'm leaving, we're outside.
I'm glad they haven't been here and asked.
Yeah, there was that email that went on ambulance funding as well, in some counties only give theirs like a thousand, I don't know how you, how are set up with fifteen, seven, fifty, but, is something to mention?
A lot of counties only give a thousand?
It varies, obviously, but it seems to be pretty heightened right to others.
Guess my suggestion would give each fifteen thousand for total thirty thousand.
We had a question on.
It's dropping, up, down, thirty-one.
What's that? I had Jim just second, I'm just asking Jamie a question, sorry. No, I mean, you got it figured, whatever the question we were gonna ask, well, will I leave back the state's attorney? It's not a big deal, I guess.
If we're gonna move back, let's move back to clerk.
Clerk?
Clerk, for the law library, do you think we can drop that to another duty?
What's that, no?
Rank eight, maybe it's not like forty-five hundred.
Yeah, we went down to, on the law library, it used to be twenty-three hundred dollars a month, and then we went with LexisNexis, and it's six hundred dollars a month, plus then we also have, have the hard bond, so that'll probably be about the same.
So, right now it's set at twenty-nine eight?
Twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah, do you think ten thousand would cover it?
I would say ten-five, probably.
We, we put it to ten. We just guessed, or?
Well, it's a six hundred and some change for, per month. I would say ten-five, just to be.
Any other changes back?
I thought you meant twenty-nine hundred, I'm like, that was really low.
No.
Yeah, that's, we switched from West Publishing.
What page do you have?
Five.
And it went from twenty-three hundred dollars a month to six hundred dollars, for the same product, so, yeah, it's a huge driving cause.
You got that, Becky, they might change to ten-five?
I changed it to ten-five, yep.
Yeah, it's on page five.
And then on state's attorney?
Which page is that, man?
Ten.
This is on page ten. We had a question about services fees, you know, sixteen thousand, you spent three so far, twelve.
I have no clue why that's that low, but last year it was twelve, so I would assume you said plan on going up. I'll have to check into that, why it's so low so far, to be honest, cause normally that was in two thousand eighteen, it was seventeen thousand, two thousand nineteen it was twelve thousand, and I have no clue why it's, why we've only spent three thousand, it's a good thing, but, um, I don't know. Other than that, I think everything else was just pretty much.
We lowered your supplies to six thousand, it looks like you weren't gonna come close to that eighty-five.
Yeah, I just left it.
You just left it.
Yeah, you can drop her down, that's fine.
We dropped that, and then we dropped utilities to sixteen hundred, it looked like you were twenty-one.
Yeah, our portion of utilities is never more than eleven hundred, it looks like, so yeah, there's no problem with that, and then, uh.
Can I tell they dropped to two-fifty?
That's fine. Yeah, that's pretty much.
Then we talked about, we're gonna, I'm gonna talk to Dave about some of the stuff in the courthouse, try to get air conditioners that aren't working, and probably some lighting get done in this year's budget.
I talked to Dave a couple of weeks ago, cause they were leaking in a lot of the, I know in the courtroom they're leaking onto the floors, and he was like, well, we can get it repaired, and I'm like, you should probably, and then I think he talked to you about maybe looking at doing a project to slowly replace these units, cause I think they're all over twenty years old, is that?
They said treacherous offices is new, but other than that?
They're all.
They're all real.
So, I'm gonna get the other Dave, go from there, and I'll bring that back.
Do you have anything else for me?
No, okay, cool, thank you. Okay, we're still on the ambulance, what were you guys thinking on the ambulance? I know we had talked about ambulance before. Talk about it, years ago.
I mean, they get stuff from insurance, and don't they get stuff from the state too?
Yeah. And they charge us dearly.
Sure, very dearly.
What is that about the janitor, or something?
So, you think about leaving it at thirty-one five, or changing?
I would say give them both fifteen, fifteen thousand, make it a thirty thousand.
Let's commission a ambulance.
I lost that page.
Page thirty-three.
Okay. What did you say, Kevin?
Fifteen thousand piece for Mulbridge and Selby, so it'll be a total of thirty thousand.
I would almost suggest we leave it the same.
Mary, what do you think?
Well, I said, it seems like they don't have a problem charging, and we do get billed out too, but, um.
Service.
Yeah, you don't wanna lose the service.
Wasn't there a bill if, like, an inmate gets, has to go to the hospital, they take it to ambulance, the county gets charged for that?
Correct, and then we, uh.
So, why, why are we getting, we getting them fifteen, over fifteen thousand, we still get charged for their service?
Cause this is a donation.
I know, so, I mean, if that's the case, you would think that they would give the county a break, but they don't give us a break, so why should we be giving them a break?
I do use the Medicaid rate spell when I get that, but, so it does lower it a little bit.
Okay, so, my point is this, if we don't give them anything, just pay their bill, we'd be way better off.
If we have an ambulance.
Well, they're getting it from their insurance companies and everybody else too, and it's voluntary force for a lot of them.
They, they, it is much to sneeze about.
Just like.
We, I don't think we wanna run the risk of losing them, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, if you guys wanna talk with them, and before you act on taking that away, I wouldn't.
We're not taking it away, I just said to take it to fifty, instead of thirty-one five for both of them, just drop to an even fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand a piece, and they both get fifteen thousand.
It's a service that I guess.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Would jeopardize.
Yeah.
I.
We're not giving raises.
Can't speak foreign, but I guess I don't think it would jeopardize if you're still keeping it there, but.
I'm guessing with them, they're not swimming in money.
Most of your voluntary services aren't. I know. I don't know what kinda dollars that Selby and Mills Springs, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they're into that, but the, uh.
My point is, let's at least talk to them, if we're giving them fifteen thousand, they should give us a break if we need them to transport an inmate.
I think we'd be better off talking to them before a guy does something there, I guess, ask them really, it's, we're talking seven hundred and fifty dollars for Mulbridge and Selby.
Yeah, they could very well put some of that, allocate that backward, you know, as part of replacing with the ambulance sometimes, they only have the one, but, uh. I'm not sure where they're at.
I would suggest leave it to that, now let's visit with them.
Visit them.
You would think that their books would be public information.
Yeah.
I think we should visit with them, we could do that. Just leave it, and then visit with them.
As long as I'm done with court, did you guys have questions online? I'll go backwards, but I can put, I guess, if you have, have a question toward the bottom number one, that's fine, I can, I can remove that, but I just gotta put a little bit more into repair and maintenance, cause I gotta replace some stuff on the crime people longer, and then I wouldn't have to have that sixty-four thousand.
Well, I think, I think we kinda decided that we should wait till Friday before we make, see what, how that goes, your guys' meeting goes before we.
That's on the jail side. Okay, so you just want, look at both of them, or? Okay, no, that's fine.
That's kinda how I thought we were gonna do it. Ambulance, we'll leave, we'll talk with them. Other health assistance, nothing?
I didn't put anything in there because they haven't been using it anyway, cause Dave should be using, keeping track of his hours when he's spraying mosquitoes and stuff, but I never know when he's doing it, and I never know if he's purchasing anything, but that's for them, that's where those expenses should be coming out of.
What's that?
When Dave sprays mosquitoes?
No.
It should be coming out of the other health budget, his salary, his time, or supplies, if any, the gas, and we haven't spent anything out of there for two years now. So, I didn't put anything in there, cause I figured if we're not consistent, then why do I keep putting it in there? So, I didn't put anything in there, cause I figured if we're not consistent, then why do I keep putting it in there?
I thought you'd bring that up Kevin.
I mean, I can put in there what we had in there last year, and then hopefully he'll start, you know, separating his time out and letting us know. All we get now is just his hours though.
I thought waiting passed, I thought mosquito would be a pass.
But then again, we get grant funding for mosquitoes. So that should be trapped kinda like Benny Burton's management.
So, you got grant funding, is that, that fund going to, into this other health, or did it go into?
It's still the general fund, but you should have expenses for other health. You're gonna be getting grants for other help.
Probably talk to him, see about about uh, splitting it out from mosquitoes, is that the only thing for mosquitoes?
Yep, whenever he's doing anything with mosquito spraying or supplies for it. So I will fill the budget back in the way.
Well, just leave it for now, and I'll talk to David if he's even spraying for mosquitoes.
Who else would be doing it?
Well.
Well, you should bring it up.
Where's the pickup? Does anybody know that?
I don't know, he might be taken to the home that night, if he's down in that area.
He's using the Dodge Dakota to spray mosquitoes? I'm wondering where the Dodge Dakota is. Nobody knows where the Dodge Dakota is.
Will you get that with Dave, have it?
Well, I don't know, last time I even thought about it, it was sent down here in the parking lots.
Right here?
Yeah.
I know, I asked.
I haven't seen it for at least.
Weeks, yeah.
My keys were on my desk, so I know I don't have it somewhere, forgot about it.
There's a stolen vehicle.
Well, Dave hasn't asked anything yet, or what?
What gym might be right now, I don't know.
Cause Deb's used it a couple of times too, but they park it back in here inside.
Doesn't the city of Chaska reimburse us for, for payers to spray them?
Most of them do.
Yeah, we charge them, but. Well, we still need to pay this wage out of it.
Hey David, it's Jim.
Yeah.
We're, we're in our budget meeting. Are you using that Dodge Dakota to spray mosquitoes? You got it? Oh, okay.
We'll put the E B out.
Okay, yeah, and then, then they were talking some about having tractor time for mosquito spraying, and taking out a different budget than your reading pass, so. They'll talk to you some other time about that. They were just wondering, somebody wondering where, if you were using that Dodge Dakota to spray mosquitoes or not.
Tell them to call Becky later, I'm just.
What's that Kevin?
Tell them to call Becky later, I'm talking about the mosquito spraying, about splitting up the hours.
Oh, yeah, uh, sometime when you have time, talk to Becky about your mosquito spraying and splits up the hours, and and that could come out of a different budget.
Right, there are needs to come back here.
And your gas for that stuff, so.
But I do need to uh. Hold the radio.
Thank you. He said it's down at the four each building. Under there. He was using, he says, and you can't see that fogger behind the other one. And I do know he sprayed in the cat, uh, he didn't tell me, but some other people told me that he's sprayed in the cat for at least a couple of times this year.
Yeah, so they said somebody will need it up here, but I'd use it.
So that's four each building.
Okay, mentally ill. I would guess they have the same, huh? They increased, well, yeah, they increased it by six thousand.
Another thing, sixty-nine hundred dollars so far in twenty.
And Christmas isn't right up? I mean, wonder.
I'm gonna say, that's Christmas, absolutely, everybody go around to the one and go to Christmas, you have a great idea about that.
Were you that same?
There is an increase of that, in that time of the year.
No, um, can we go to?
No. I wouldn't. It's been pretty steady.
You mean, leave it around twelve or thirteen, is that what you're saying?
I would leave it at thirteen.
Okay.
Disabled.
I can say, I can say the same.
I would leave that the same. Your abuse.
This one is Northeastern Mental Health.
I have something on this one. We've been giving fifteen thousand five hundred to Northeast Mental Health, and they, they haven't hardly done any of the evaluations.
Correct? Correct.
The one that's been doing them is S A for support circle, support circle. We've done over ninety percent of them. I would suggest that we enter into a contract with her to do a hundred percent of them, to just give her a contract. Unless she wants to do it for each one, but I talked to her a little bit about it, if she had a contract, she would just have, use that flat salary basically to do all of them. She's on call twenty-four hours a day to do them. So.
She does the majority of them, it's very seldom where, you know, she's gone for train, and a couple of times where you had to run them over. Mobergen Regionals even using her, so.
But who's still paying her?
We are, county, county does.
Two hundred dollars a time.
Two, two fifty. Two fifty a time, so. But she comes directly to the jail when I call her, she sets up the timing.
My suggestion is don't pay.
Northeast Mental Health doesn't even have an office here anymore.
No.
She was doing, I don't even know how much she's doing referrals, she mentioned something about she'll take a referral form, but that's never been based in I don't think, my knowledge, or she isn't doing many of them. So.
Have any idea how many is there a year because like, I mean, that's why I was asking. I mean, I'm sure you don't know, but I mean.
I can give you a ballpark, or, well, Chelsea probably shouldn't owe for nineteen, but um. Funny, you know.
I mean, if you're talking thirty, it's the same thing, so I'm just curious how many there are.
Yeah, I, so just to reiterate what Kevin was talking about, I talked to her also, and I just told her, told her, I said, if you're gonna be doing these, and we are, and I actually asked Becky a couple of times, and she told me, um, got back to me what the actual amount is that we pay out to Northeast Mental Health, I would like to see that benefit and keep it here as long as we have the services here. But, that's up to you guys.
Okay, but then how, I guess how do we do that, I mean, we just not do the mental health center? Then we gotta do another, a different line item for?
So far she's done twenty-seven since January first.
Well, if you're just gonna switch where you're, I mean, you just switch what mental health center you're paying. So paying Northeast Mental Health against First Circle.
Well, but at, at that rate, I mean, I mean, then this figure is not even close. If you said twenty-seven, I heard you said January.
Done twenty-seven since January first.
And Chelsea's rocket science figure this out, but that's at two fifty each.
Chelsea's gonna text me the number, total, to include Mobergen, cause they've done some too.
This is the email I got, cause I asked her, how many, how many evaluations have you done so far this year?
Is that jazz?
Yep.
Okay.
Cause the, some of the other docs I've got on that number.
Twenty-seven since January first. So.
Well, at thirty, with her rate, that's fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's only half a year. So, if we can negotiate a contract with her for a full year.
That'd be sixteen.
Two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but that'd be seventy-five hundred.
Well, that's fair.
Yeah, so you got fifteen thousand for a year if this is a.
Sixty, half a year.
Sixty is fifteen thousand.
Yeah. I figured, right.
So we're, based on this number, we're pretty close.
They're not getting, she's not getting.
She's not getting any, and we're paying this plus that.
So, I would agree with you, let's just switch this whole thing over to her, based on that contract.
Let's try to negotiate.
See if we can negotiate with her and say, well, you can do it, if we give you this contract, just do it.
And then there won't be a, or a per charge on there, and, and I talked to her a little bit about that, and she would be willing to go with that.
Yes, thank you.
Why don't we just take away the fifteen five for Northeast Mental Health, and then address that in the future?
Sounds perfect.
I guess that makes sense.
Come to the commissioner's meeting, or if you want, I can just negotiate with her too, or.
I mean, even if we had to come up with a negotiation of seventeen, sounds like a much better deal than what we've got going currently.
Well, you didn't, you better really got one currently.
We're spending fifteen-five and getting nothing, plus the fifteen on top of that one, we're all done at the end of the year.
Right.
Mental board services and fees, I would drop that to twelve thousand if I were you. And that's what it was last year, that was our highest year, but you never know. That's up to you. We've only spent twenty-five hundred, so.
Nineteen was a, looks like that exceptionally high, three and six.
You want to go to twelve or ten, or? Page thirty-nine.
I would say ten.
Yeah, I would say ten would be.
Ten dollars.
Historic museum.
Yep.
Leave it?
I haven't put anything in because we haven't been sending it since two thousand seventeen. That was that budget, aside from all stuff.
Do you wanna do anything with any of the equipment at Mobergen, I don't think they've moved it this year.
So leave it then? Zero?
I would, yeah.
Senior citizen.
I think we're giving Mobergen extra for a van purchase or something, we have been. Um, Selby, we've been giving two thousand, so the rest was going from Mobergen. I think it was to help purchase something. I don't know how many years they had on that, or. But that's what that amount's for.
You got a contact number, or we could call them?
I'm sure I can get one.
Well, we'll call them and see. We got a van now, so I don't know if it's paid for or.
I think we should do a little checker into that.
I got a, that's, I can see they've got a newer van.
They've had that for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Because it looks like it was always two to Mobergen, two to Selby.
Yep.
Or I think that should probably get dropped back down, but I guess we should, probably should call. Agree on?
Yep.
Yep.
So, take me or?
You're the one touching, you got the number.
Take a kid's number. Okay, I just didn't want three of us to be doing it.
Me and you volunteer go.
Yeah.
Easy transfer, I like that term.
Yes. Extension.
Billy Cherry's downstairs if he doesn't like her. Not everybody.
Cause I'm just looking first, see if something looks way out of whack.
Looks like that travel looking product. I mean, we could put down two thousand dollars.
That's right. Two thousand on the travel?
Well, it's down now because she's been quarantined, so.
Yeah, but still.
Probably gonna go back up.
Yeah, but even if you look back at numerous years. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, you can go back to them years and.
I mean, she's at nine forty-five, and I guess quarantine, that's what she's saying.
I think two thousand.
That way.
You guys agree on that? Even like rentals, I mean. Even in the history of it, doesn't look like she uses much, I mean, I don't even know if we need to have it in three hundred.
Why is it, is the insurance?
Okay, that is being fixed, that is incorrect amount of the insurance.
Oh, okay.
It should only be two hundred and seventy years, right around there, it's being worked on right now.
I think the only thing that she had on her rentals was the porta potters, I don't know what for grounds.
Yeah, but he never would've dropped that.
Hundred bucks, looks like it would be covered in half, hundred fifty.
You know what, I think, but weren't the bathrooms used these years, instead?
Also, forty-five.
Yeah. And we had.
One year it was, and then we got into a big fight with them.
Right, so I think that's probably why their rentals is up now. And we haven't spent it yet this year because we're not gonna end up having them.
Yeah.
So you guys might wonder.
I said they ran out one live year, and that would not be that.
Yeah.
At least two.
Not enough bathroom you need?
Yeah.
Yeah, you might wanna leave that three hundred in there, I don't know how much porta potters are, but.
I don't think you're eighty-seven a day, I think, I don't know, I got hard feelings about that, so. I know what you're having, so do I. Did you hear what we, what we offered?
No, I'll tell you sometime.
Okay.
Hey, the hot seat or we're?
Yeah, you can.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
I guess the only thing that we were looking at changing was your travel, we said we dropped back to two thousand, you see an issue there?
Um, cause where we were at, we were at twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, and just going by previous years, I mean, even your high year in seventeen is only nineteen, so, it's only decreased to seventeen.
Well, this year especially decreased because.
Oh yeah, twenty.
I'm not anywhere. Um, the guy doesn't know what the price of, what the price of gas and stuff will do, but I would think it would increase that much.
I guess I would either.
Because you know, the more virtual learning that we started to do, I would think that it's going to eliminate some of that long distance travel, because we learn now too, that there's different ways of doing things.
Yeah.
So, it should, that should be okay.
Yeah. I guess I don't think we had anything, on anything else.
There was, there was one.
Oh, Becky had some.
I'm sorry. Don't you get paid per mile? Don't you get paid per mile, so it wouldn't matter what the gas price is? This, this is true, and I think. And then your insurance thing is being handled. Oh, that, that line item deal though? Yep. Okay.
I'll bring that down first.
Not a problem, I just thought, just run that to, to, cause I was curious as to why that went so goofy, but. Anyway, um. Switch it and charge Josh? I'm sure he'll be fine with that.
So yeah, I don't, I don't definitely have any, like, the place to put it.
And I think that, um, oh, there was one other thing that I noticed in this last month or whatever, and that was the. And I think that, um, oh, there was one other thing that I noticed in this last month or whatever, and that was the, I think it was the, what was it, repairs and maintenance, that two hundred and eighteen twenty that came out or whatever? That was for Delta Dental? Is that? Two eighteen twenty is about to spend it so far in twenty twenty. But that... When I looked at the sheet, it says that that went out for, um, the check was issued and it was for Delta Dental, is that? I just wonder if that was the right, the right line item? No, that wouldn't be the right line item for that, so when you get, that's why we give them to you, so you can check them and if you see anything that's... Wait, well, that's why I was just... Yeah, you'll have to talk to Eva about that. Okay. See what's going on there. Okay. Otherwise, no, if you, if you, everything else looks like it would be unchecked, but you're right with the money and stuff like that, it wasn't, just wasn't thinking, I was just thinking about expense and whatnot, and I suppose if the gas price did change, that that could possibly potentially change per mile too. So we should follow this date, so. Well, yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Soil conservation. Page forty-six.
Scott.
What?
Can we take a break soon?
Right after soil conservation.
Yeah, because I'm talking, I turned that on, soil conservation. Okay, now... What basically is that all consistent, I think I know, but...
That's just the health insurance for our window.
Just the one that Campbell County's only giving a thousand dollars to, and we're giving eighteen thousand?
Well, she asked if you guys wanted her board members to come and meet with you guys, so I could tell her to have them grab a cent first.
Yes.
I think that'd be a great thing.
Yes.
A couple of years ago, they didn't spend that much when they sent some back.
Yeah, they did, I think it was like, they had a payment like fifteen thousand, and so they did give us money back, but...
But it's a split between us and Campbell, isn't it?
No. They have their own.
Yeah. Campbell County has their own, but I think, I think best if, if we talk to them.
Oh, we do, for health insurance. And then they sent some back two years ago.
They have their own, why are we, why are they giving us anything now? But who on this deal?
We're paying them for...
Wait, so extension, we share, share you with them, so they reimburse us half of her expenses. This is soil conservation, which is one that forces it, and they just request, because she, they can't afford health insurance for her, I guess? And they came and met with you guys, we used to never pay them, but they came and met with the board years ago, and commissioner started providing funds so that she could have health insurance, because the way it's set up, she can't get on the county's health insurance, but she's not, because she's not paid by the county. But she's the county soil conservation person, item.
I think it'd be best if they came, yes, don't you agree? Okay, I'm gonna take a break. Marcy?
Marcy, we're gonna take a break.
And then, so far this year, when we did get that new body on there, the new bed, whoever put it up once before the year changed the gas line coming up, so we had to get that replaced. We changed it from a two and a half inch pipe coming up to a three-quarter inch pipe, and we couldn't fill it. So we had to take it back down to Lambs, and they fixed it, so...
I would say leave everything about the same, huh?
Yep. Or the preservation. Planting zoning. Wonder why would we have the zoning services and fees, we haven't used any in three years?
Well, I think that used to be when we were paying NICOB for the health fund ordinances maybe.
Oh, right, we're just in time.
Okay, I only made a change in salary, just anticipating the...
That's accurate.
Because I'd be doing more hours if that came to be, but it doesn't look that way. Okay, the services and fees, I'd see nothing's been there for... That's, we've kept that there, just in case we need, uh, NICOB. Okay. Travel was abused for obvious reasons, so... Okay, is we ordering the segment?
Yeah.
Good to go?
All right, thank you.
Transfer dollars.
That's twelve thousand for the fire department, like every year.
Say the same with us, then you guys, or what?
Yeah.
Was Gary coming or probably not?
No.
One thing I would suggest is for salary, uh, gotta figure it out, where Marty back to his original salary. Only have two seasonal equipment operators and one secretary. And for their full-time deal, seasonal equip, be two seasonal equipment operators. Their salary would be twenty-two thousand, oh nine, eighteen a year. So their total salary would be four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight ninety-seven thirty-five. He's asking for, he was asking for two part-time guys, this is built in for that.
You have that, you say you have that figured, where you get two seasonal, part-time equipment? I wonder where he, how he's got things figured, if he has for last year, five, or this year, five thirty-eight.
And I think that's where he come, Becky said it was in his budget to hire one more full-time guy.
I don't think we had that in our budget last year, not for a full-time.
No.
Well, would you say, did you say he had enough in there to cover?
He's already spent half.
Oh, hell, that's more than half.
At the end of June.
I don't believe for a second we had built in for a full-time, but we had...
No, it's not, two part-time.
Or you're, you're thinking that he had enough in the budget where he could have...
I wasn't at that meeting, I was on the phone, but I thought somebody said he had enough in his budget to cover another full-time employee.
No, and then he hasn't paid, he's paid pennies so far this year, so that took...
I would say leave the same, we'll talk to him on that. I think we're gonna have to visit with him on some of this stuff anyway.
Yeah, I would have to say he should be probably, I'm sure he's at our next, because, because I visited with him today, and that dollar fifty, a cut royalty. I don't know where to go on that.
Yeah, he, he was asking for something, but he don't know what to do. What, what, because that'll, that'll make a big difference in this. I get, I would supply the materials. I think he's in, at the one, at the one pit that he's talking about, and that costs another twenty-eight thousand. And that didn't include the other two places he was signing a bid option.
My question on that deal with him the other day, and it kind of hit me after going home, with the royalties on that, is with the new contract, they wanted a dollar fifty royalty, and he says, well, if one's getting one, they also did that, why is that? Why does he feel that way when they've already got the contract signed that's out there, why do we have to go back and give them more money on a contract?
I think it's, contract you just getting signed, maybe they signed it by now, but they haven't crushed the gravel there yet. So I guess...
But don't you, I mean, we've got other contracts that are out there, don't we? That, I mean, that we agreed at a dollar ten, or a dollar eight cents, or whatever it was?
I think he has one guy who was dealing.
Now, the new guy, and that was the case where they went to a dollar fifty, but he made his own comment that...
There was one guy that he talked to before for a dollar ten, right?
Right.
That was a sign that I don't think...
I don't know.
Because he asked us about it.
See, I, I guess maybe I misunderstood him, I thought that, he thought, I thought he said, what's good for one's good for all, if we're gonna do that.
Well, I, yeah, I think, what I understood is he thought if we're gonna pay you a dollar fifty, we ought to pay the next guy a dollar fifty too, or... Any, not, not the gravel we've already crushed, but that, that we're going to crush. And I don't know, there's a big demand for that gravel, and all these other contractors come in, I know what happened in Campbell County a few years ago, they're telling me. The other contractors come in, and they'll buy that gravel up, if you don't have a bid option on it, and, and like, they can pass an extra expense on the, on, in their bid, when they, when they get the project, we can't do that.
I think Gary was just trying to be fair, and that's what Gary was trying to do, to keep everything... I, I just, and I said I must have misunderstood it, because I thought he was saying that it was for other contracts that we had already out there, that if we're gonna get one, then we're gonna...
No, it was for the new ones coming out. I think it's the ones he...
I was talking, I, I took it as the new one.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what is one due.
That's just one, your contract is...
No, you usually make that contract, I, you, you can probably tell, Jim, I'm sure you got a contract with the county, five years? Seven years, it's something like that.
Yeah, it's five or...
Five or seven, it's, it's something like that, because I remember seeing the one...
It's good to pick, right?
Right. So then we can go in there and crush with it, and repay them at that rate, whatever we crush. It's, like I said, I think it's five or seven years, I signed that.
If I remember right, that's from the time it's crushed till it's reclaimed, you're done, in seven years or whatever. And, and then, I ever read my contract for a while, I think they had the option to redo that too.
Right.
They got a, they got a contract on my pit, I would guess it will run out before long. But he doesn't mind crushing my pit right now, any, anytime soon.
We're gonna have to just wait on this whole thing, then, so... I would have to say until we talk with Gary himself here.
Something to think about, guys, that dollar fifty, do we pay it or not? At one time, Gary Madness, before he was highway superintendent, Campbell County, he said that the pit's just up there not too far, the commission there would not pay him till justice come and release it, so the only gravel they had was up by power. I don't know if they renegotiated any, this is quite a few years ago. You know, and we, we don't, don't want to lose any more gravel, absolutely have to.
Well, unfortunately, it's, the pits that we are needing gravel on is where, where we need gravel, we don't have it. And if we don't get it, where we can get it, what are we gonna do, truck it in from wherever? And our costs are...
We're unlikely to come out of Potter County, it's fierce, none of the ones that are abundant. Yeah.
Pay more for it, same thing.
Well, that's, exactly, that's... I mean, it is, it is, it is what it is, either you're gonna pay for it here, or you're gonna pay for it traveling, bringing it in.
I think it's like five or five fifty, a ton crushed, with a crushing cost of wood. And that's what Campbell County paid, that was a crushing cost.
I didn't, we need to visit with Gary on that, all that stuff, so... I would should, we're hearing with Gary's. Trying to double that up.
Page sixty-one is nine one one, that's just the surcharge that flows through us that we took on the city of Mowbridge.
I guess Gary and I visited a little bit about that the other day, and he was explaining a little bit of that. And I, I think there's some more research that needs to get done on that, on that nine one one, because of stuff that the county is actually doing, the highway department.
Well, he needs to contact someone then, because our understanding is we are not allowed to use that money on pretty much anything. So if he wants to research it and find something we are allowed to use that money on, then we can maybe start keeping it, but...
I mean, like, that's even like the sign, just, just say signs, when one gets broke down, and the county has to go out there and, you know? Like, he was getting at is, he said, well, then if, why doesn't, why don't they do it?
Have to look into it.
You know, rather than, the guys down here have to go out and do something, if there's money there. The only thing he was getting at is then, then it shouldn't be used for that, some of it should be, not, not all that, I didn't say, I didn't mean all that.
But there are very strict rules on it, so all the counties started sending their surcharge to, to be that, because they're the only ones that can use it really. So if there's stuff they should be doing that they're not with this money, then maybe that needs to be addressed, but I don't think we even have to probably use it on anything.
How does the guy find that out, though?
He's gonna have to talk to his date.
Where's the coordinator, how much you care?
Like here? I would, I would call Shawnee Repton.
Who do you think, talk to, Josh? Who do you think? Well, Rick's retired, so I, I...
He needs to call out and talk to Shawnee, and here, I can give him a contact number.
Yeah. It would make some sense if, being we're sending all the money out that way, if we're gonna do a bunch of sign replacements or whatever on the county level, we should be able to send a bill to them to have, if that money can be used for that. And I'll be honest with you, I just, I had a call in the local aid the other day, and they called me, and they said, well, that, that's not where it's at, and I said, well, it's gotta be, I said, it's in the Atlas, I said, there might, there's not a sign there, I think there used to be, but I said, there is a one there. They had located in the wrong spot, I said, well, you gotta go miles south. There was no sign there, actually, I think it was, you had a homeowner there, he said, the heck was it, the other, it was something that he said, they couldn't find this place either, right where I was working, he said, because there is no sign there. So, well, just get that to Gary then, and go from there. Fire protection.
Is that the same as always?
Does this go out to the fire department, screw them?
Yeah, if they get us their fires.
So this and the twelve thousand?
No, that's, that's part of the twelve thousand. That's why we had to transfer that twelve thousand in because the levy for fire departments is five thousand a year.
Which one was that on you're talking?
If my transfer's out, it would be one on one, nine one one.
Right.
We transfer money out of the general fund into the fire protection fund every year. Because they were only getting five thousand split. Previously.
We gotta pull thirty-one to five and split out.
No, nineteen five.
Where is one?
Sure.
Twelve thousand is part of the nineteen five.
Good.
Sixty-seven.
Oh, so some of these numbers, um, because of the transition from the one on one to the two six are still showing zeros on there. Um, but I think they got it all sort of out figured out. So, um, obviously changed everything back down to where it was. The health, the, the workers comp on the very first year that I took this over, um, it was actually like five fifty and that's where the six hundred, that six hundred increase for twenty twenty came from. Um, and now this year, twenty twenty, the one year payment was the twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. So, um, I didn't touch that either. That's why there's not a zero in there because I didn't know what to exactly do with that. Um, and I seen two drastic big numbers come through in those two years. So that's that. Uh, the health insurance, um, is obviously gonna depend on the next person coming in, um, what they're gonna end up taking. The insurance, uh, the EM disaster insurance, uh, wasn't figured in, um, cause I hadn't seen that figure in the previous years. So this year requested, I did the six hundred since the expense was the five seventy eighty. Um, I left everything else exactly the same except for the travel. I moved it down to a thousand. Um, I had bumped it up a little bit this year, uh, cause I was planning on attending more trainings, um, and conference. And also, um, I had became vice president of region three for the South Dakota Emergency Management Association. So that's obviously adding expense to it too. Um, to go to that conference and be down there longer than normal. Um, I had moved it back down to a thousand because I didn't anticipate any more classes, um, or as many because I was wondering if seeing all of them this year, but because of COVID, I'm missing one. Um, so that's just gonna depend on the next person coming in, how gung ho it then, how many, you know, classes they're gonna be going to in a year. Um, the very first year that I went to it, I was right up on that thousand, um, going, because I went every chance I had, uh, down with peer, um, to go to those classes. Um, and so that's where that increase came from, was just to try to. So I don't know where to go from that, because I don't know what the next person's gonna do or, so with this COVID, how many they're actually gonna have. So then everything else, like I said, was the same. There's a lot of like the publishing stuff. I do public service accounts, so it's, I don't actually run ads or anything like that. So it doesn't cost the county anything on that side of it. Um, supplies, when we actually see that you're in, uh, when it comes to the end of this, uh, term, that it's gonna be significantly higher just because of all the COVID stuff happening. I know that I went over my eight thousand by a little ways, but because of that CARES Act money coming in, um, hopefully we'll be able to get that difference reimbursed back into the county. And so I just left that at eight thousand. I don't know if you wanna increase that just in case, or if you wanna leave that the same. So that's the situation with the supplies.
I don't know. It looks to me like we just leave it the same for right now. What do you guys think? Thank you.
The rest of the years?
It's money that's collected, um, that we just pass on to bridges and it's a guess, but it's based on how many marriage and divorce certificates are issued. So I.
You got zero.
Or nine hundred.
Yeah.
It's good.
I love it.
Sure, but there's supplies.
I just left it the same. Um, we didn't have a class this year. It actually restarted and school shut off in the middle of it. Um, we're talking about, cause we, uh, usually cover the curriculum covers fifth and sixth grade. So we're possibly, yeah, depending on how the schools open up. You know, possibly doing fifth and sixth to get the other one caught up that left fifth grade last year. Continue on and actually let them complete it. Um, don't know yet, but should be fine.
Okay.
All right, we'll just leave it. Solid waste.
So as you can see, the salary is up significantly. And the reason behind that is because I believe that the guys out there that are running heavy equipment and the mechanic and the foreman and the part tech people should be making the same as the people running the heavy equipment and the mechanic and the part time people at the highway department. I don't know what, I don't see what the difference would be in them except they're out there in hazardous waste. Picking garbage with rattled snakes and everything else, working in the elements always. And I just don't know why they got so far behind as heavy equipment operators. You're not gonna hire a heavy equipment operator for sixteen forty-five an hour. And that's what my heavy equipment operators make. And my foreman makes eighteen something an hour. And I mean, I know you guys are discussing the Marty thing, so I built in as, he's also my mechanic. So I built him in at Dewey's wage, highway mechanic's wage. They're doing the same work. I mean, of course it's a little different, but it's pretty much running heavy equipment. I mean, I've got people walking around with rattled snakes for eleven dollars an hour. I don't know many people that are gonna do that. And I think they just got kinda left behind over the years.
There isn't a lot of difference between there and I would put.
I would have to agree.
So what I did was like my heavy equipment, I had two heavy equipment operators and I put them at the late operators, nineteen sixteen, is what I figured out. And then the part time to put it, I think sixteen, whatever his part time person is, Jerry. Is what I figured it is. And then, um, and I have three of those, but two of them are seasonal. Jim gets, runs the scale three days a week. I didn't do anything with mine, with my wage, but I really think those guys need to be brought up to the current heavy equipment operator rates.
That's what they've done years ago.
Well, and then, um, Paul, he's the foreman and the mechanic and Dewey's mechanic wage was this twenty-one something. So that's what I figured him as.
What's he at now?
Eighteen something. And that, so that's why I did that. Um, I mean, it's obviously up to you guys.
We agree.
No, I think that it's been behind for quite a while.
I would agree, but how could we give them a raise and everyone else in the county?
It would put it more.
There's always two sides to this story, you know?
It would also put it more in line with all the rest of the landfill surrounding.
I don't think it, I guess, well, I guess I'm looking at it, it's just me, but I don't, I guess I'm not looking at it, but they're maybe getting a raise. I would just think that you're getting the salaries back in to where the salaries should be.
Well, and again, I've said this before, but the landfill is not run on tax dollars. It's self-sufficient. So it is kind of a different business. And our profit will still exceed our expenses next year. But I mean, I, I'm pretty sure nobody around here is gonna go out and pick paper, pick garbage for eleven dollars an hour in ninety degrees and rattlesnakes and gross conditions. I would hope they would understand.
I'm guessing it'd be hard to replace them heavy equipment operators.
Oh, for sixty dollars an hour.
And, and quite frankly, I've heard that since I've been on here. Why didn't Ryan? Working that area?
Ryan brought it up to me, but he never brought it up.
Yeah, he never did do it at budget time.
How's the time to make it right?
And, and, and one thing about it, that money will circulate back into our county again. It's, it's not like it's leaving the area.
We all agree it's been missed?
Yes. Yep.
What do you think David?
I suppose we're getting it all at once.
It should've, like I said, it's like Jim said too, it should've been done years ago. It's crazy. Like I asked the way to the last minute to do it. It's gotta be done sometime. If you, to me, if you had to even talk about it, put the conditions between, um, later road and those conditions, and you're using the same equipment. There's a quite a difference between the one two. That's not the most pleasant.
Fires and, and explosions and you name it.
So easier to raise this one, obviously, back to what be aligned with everybody else and drop everybody else down to what these guys are at.
You are right there. We got that with you, you hear a lot next week or two. They do it at the social media every other day.
Your repairs are major. You only have thirty-five years. You already spent thirty-seven years. This year, a hundred and eighteen last year.
Well, that's because of the Soul Brothers and Wake Engineering and all the stuff from, that we've had to do for that.
That's another, I mean, you're recording at sixty-three.
I just couldn't watch my mom that year. I mean, I'll gladly up it.
Did you see anything?
Um, we could really use some supplies out there. Like a pickup. Uh, I budgeted twenty-five thousand for a pickup for this year. But I've been kind of hesitant to use it because of the contractor having to be paid out of this year's budget again. And it's hard to find a good pickup for twenty-five thousand. Our one pickup cannot be fixed. Transmission's done. And our other one, it's okay, but I wouldn't take it out of county.
See, it's almost not even that great to go to Mole Bridge.
What about the Dodge Spirit?
Um, we were gonna see if we can use that, because we gotta make around the surplus for tools. And that's why we're kind of wondering where that was. But, um, I mean, we'll use it out there, but this time of year, it usually, you know, is using it for spring, so we've just kind of been waiting, but we do need it soon if possible, just at least to run down there.
I see it's good.
And I can get breakdowns of those wages, you know, each person. And have it ready for the next meeting or, you know, about.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Everybody good there?
Yep.
Okay, this is rule number seven, discussion regarding emergency manager, manager position.
I sent the advertisement and held up to run it for two weeks. That's all the information I have.
What did you do on the start of the advertisement?
Yeah, it's.
No, like, cause what, it wasn't in the reminder this week?
No, it, it was gonna go on the other two papers.
Okay.
I can put it in the reminder next time if you guys want. That's just
That just reaches a lot.
A way bigger cost, so.
You run that like in a statewide deal too, or if you want to do it on the internet, or you don't?
Cause I just have been getting close to about, I thought they.
Emergency manager position being advertised.
I can put it on channel seven. I, I can put it as a reminder for what you guys want me to do. I just did what I normally do and sent it to the two legal papers, so.
Maybe the reminder in the channel wouldn't probably be a bad idea.
Does Soby get channel seven?
I think. Circulates a lot.
Yeah, I can put it in the reminder for next week.
I think that would.
Okay.
For sure.
Reminder, channel seven, and you want it on the radio?
Does Soby get channel seven? Channel seven or nine?
Okay.
What about, uh, Dublin?
Job service unit?
Job line, if it, if they have room for it. They have a list, like your next, your next, I can ask.
Anything else with that?
So, um, what I found out through the state is I contacted my regional coordinator and asked them what could be done. If, um, I can retain the position until we get somebody full-time in the position. Uh, but because this is kind of the real first time where the EM position's been a hundred percent full-time, um, that we've had to transition now. Uh, we are in contract until the end of September as a hundred percent EM. We cannot get out of the contract, um, without risking the county probably having to pay back the state some type of funding. Um, if we would switch it now in the middle or in the last quarter of the contract. Um, so like I said, that ends at the end of September. New twenty twenty-one contract, um, starts October one. Um, so that being said, they suggested that, uh, because they do have the knowledge now that I was appointed the treasurer, uh, position, that I cannot put any time down for EM work. Um, I will not get paid or reimbursed through the state, uh, because I'm not a true hundred percent right at the moment. Um, so to be honest, I've completely backed off. I haven't really been doing anything with it, um. And, uh, just kind of been letting it sit there unless something major would've come up, then I have my phone, um, where I would do it. But, um, I would be able to have countless times as doing any work for it. So they suggested to find somebody who, you know, pretty much doesn't have a job and said that they can dedicate a hundred percent to the EM hours, eight hours a day, until we get somebody in here full-time to take those EM hours so that the county stays.
Do they need any qualifications or can we just go pick somebody out of the bar?
So obviously with that, um, uh, you know, I wanted to stay in the, in the realm of EM. Um, and I reached out to Ted Swayto, the Warhawk director, and just said, is this something that you would wanna take on until we've found somebody? And, um, he thought about it for a few days and I actually just talked to him this morning and, uh, he said, no, he does not wanna do that. Uh, he does not wanna take on interim position just because he doesn't want, you know, by, by chance that it's a two-week Uh, he does not wanna take on interim position just because he doesn't want, you know, by, by chance that it's a two-week possibly interim position, then it could turn into a month and then it could turn into who knows what. Um, and he just said that he would not be interested, so I'm kinda back at square one of of that. Um, EM position would just sit there until the next person got hired. Um, nothing would get done. Um, and then the next person coming in will have to pick up and kind of, you know, backpedal a little bit and try to see what's been done from the time I left until the time they're hired is the only thing. So, um, you know, I don't know if there's, there's something that, you know, you can do contract rate and, and hire somebody on the side where it would be doing some work on the side and, you know, whether it be me or something, I don't know. Um, but there was no really good answer on what to do. It was kind of like, try to get somebody hired as quickly as you can. This was the other part of the advice, that they can get rolling. Um, so if you're looking at still advertising for the next two weeks and then interviews and then if they have to do a two-week notice, um, the office could be vacant, you know, for a month or so. Unless you have any suggestions of somebody who would-
Just don't have it stolen for a month.
Right, you know, it's just a lot of nature to calm down here a little bit. Um,
Whoa. Eight hours a day ain't much for an emergency manager for you, though, you're like you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They doesn't say what eight hours it has to be, does it?
No, it doesn't. Uh, you know, and, and it maybe it wouldn't have been, you know, in, in this situation where, you know, it would've been like anything else, you know, I would be in my two-week notice, would've been EM position for another two weeks and then would've went into the treasurer's department, but I wanted to get in there 'cause I wanted to have that two weeks, you know, another two weeks under my belt to start learning and getting in there. So, um, I, I started right away that afternoon in the treasures and have been there a day since then. So, um, I don't know what the correct answer is on that, but they were very clear that um, it has to be somebody who doesn't hold another position, um, to qualify as a hundred percent. I mean, I know in the past that, you know, Josh has been interim, um, but those are the times where I think he's been at fifty percent for a quarter time and and they're able, you know, willing to flex those times and he was able to take that position, but because it's a true hundred percent, that's not an option.
So would, would we be out of line offering to one of them young ladies that applies to the treasure job?
If that, if that didn't have a job right now, would you start it right away?
He what?
Offer it to the, someone that applied for the treasure job.
That didn't have a job.
I've already got an applicant for the EM job, so I don't know if you guys will have, go down that road, 'cause I wanna talk to Jamie.
And I know that I've received several texts and calls, um, in regards to applying, and so if they have an argument there, absenture, resumes, um, they're gonna be coming.
Yeah.
Too.
But in the meantime, we gotta fill that position for the next two weeks or three weeks.
Right. And so I don't wanna leave it sit there, but I also don't wanna, you know, be putting hours in and then not getting anything back out of it either. I mean, I don't know if that sounds selfish or not.
Kevin, what did you say the last meeting?
I go to full-time job already. I have three of them. So. I don't know if that would qualify or not. Did they say anything about qualifications?
No, they just said if you can get somebody in there that can, you know, that would be willing to take it and somebody who would be willing to, you know, if you get called out and and things, that is gonna be willing to essentially do the duty of the job, um, you know, not just take it and put down eight hours and not do anything with it. It's kind of the, the thing that they're trying to stay away from.
You're kind of retired, Roger Davis.
I wanna be deputy first. You can't go through them?
Sure. Yes, I asked them specifically if the sheriff or a deputy or something could take it, and they said, are they a hundred percent time? Are they a full-time deputy, full-time sheriff? And I said, yes, and they said, no. They would have to give up essentially their job to do the EM job.
What about one of, one of the ones you mentioned, what about Delroy?
Um, under, without speaking too much about what's going on in, in his situation, um, it would mess some things up for him. He wouldn't be able to take it. And the same thing would've been with Ted, um, because of certain situations too with South Dakota retirement and things like that. Uh, he wouldn't have been able to get paid through payroll. He would've had to been a contract employee.
In two months there or something, then you can do what you want with it.
Yeah, as of October one, if you wanted to switch it to a quarter time or halftime, or if you wanted to do whatever and not have a contract with the state and not get reimbursed half or whatever you're gonna pay, um, you know, then you can do what you want with it. It's just that you're not gonna get that half reimbursement for, for salary and, and benefits. So if you just wanna be done with the state and, you know, cut it way back into the quarter time.
Takes that line, I feel like.
Yeah.
You don't tell, I-
And that was Ted's concern too, is that he didn't wanna do this for long-term and that was the whole concern, is if you don't get applicants or if you're not quite sure about those applicants that do apply and you could drag this thing out a long time.
I'd go up the way to lose a week before we see what starts coming in.
And if you put the two-week deadline for advertising, I don't know if you wanna start interviews and do that, you know, ahead of time either, what the reality of that is, if you run it for two weeks and all of a sudden you get five more applicants and then you already hired somebody, you know.
We had any advertisement, two weeks or just until filled?
Yeah. I just told the papers for two weeks.
Oh, okay. So interviews basically is just, it's until filled. So it gives us little option, uh, you have the interview if you need to order.
Yeah, so that definitely opens that up.
Got another person I need to get a, a description to.
Well, I, I think we just take a chance on it.
Well, what do we do between now and then? We gotta have somebody send that office tomorrow?
It is, and you don't need somebody in the office tomorrow. If you, you have your choice of, if you wanted to leave it sit and not have an interim position, fine, that's fine. It can sit there. It's just that somebody who is actually doing the EM work cannot be another department, the person that's full-time.
Yes, sir.
Basically, we're just not gonna be paying anybody salary for that department, so then the state's not gonna reimburse us in full like normal, 'cause we're not paying it out.
Oh, I see, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it'd be a horse piece.
It's, I mean, we'll just have to meet.
That's kind of how I look at it.
We got a meeting next Tuesday? I guess maybe we oughta look and see what we have for applicants and then maybe decide then how soon we can have interviews or see what it's like on Monday. We could put something on the agenda for Monday and go for that. We could put something on the agenda anyway, you know?
No, it's all right.
Yeah.
We don't. Rihanna?
We're following Monday or Tuesday?
Around eight, maybe, or Tuesday.
Yeah, I raised some money.
I have to, I'm judging by Monday.
This has been beating it off a lot lately.
That's only two days a month. That's what I was told. Mornings, two. Just two mornings a month.
Okay, we got anything else to discuss?
You got a lot to do.
Any other special?
Thank you.
Would you? Go for a German.
They got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
A second?
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All I can see to do is hopefully best that we get applicants completed.